Our second item under presentations is present the Beautification Task Force Awards. Irene.
Oops. It's very exciting to see so many people here and I'd like to give you a little background first about what the Beautification Awards are and who promotes them. We have a, it's called a task force, it's called the Beautification Task Force. It's a group of people who get together and meet once a month and they dream up things to do to help beautify the city. And one of the things we dreamed up several years ago now was to give awards to businesses, individual families, apartments, special awards and special recognitions to people or groups that have done outstanding jobs in helping beautify our city. And we always like to recognize them. So tonight we're doing, if you can see in the audience, we have a lot of firemen and some policemen and we are going to do a special recognition awards to them as, that you'll see in just a second. Before I go on with that, I'd like to say that the Beautification Task Force is the group that sponsored and urged the city to sponsor the Trees, Tree USA, many years ago now. So that's one of the things we do. I'd like to introduce my members that are here. This is Sally. Sally Helber, sorry. Sandy Headley, Carolyn Livinggood, Melanie Tobin, and I think that's all that's here tonight. We also have Bridget Lopez and Carol Moriarty who were not able to come. We have several new members and anybody who after you see this would like to join us, we're on the website and you can come see when we have our next meeting. Also, I hope you all partook in the goodies that were outside and had coffee and something to drink. That was provided for our setup by Vicky Hachey, our deputy city clerk. And Larry Franzella is here. One of the things we do is we give the people who win first prize a plaque. Thank you. This is what it looks like. And as you see, it is compliments of the Prudential California Realty. And Larry Franzella, who is a former council member, a former mayor of the city, is president of this company. And did you want to come and say hello at least?
Just here to congratulate everyone.
Well, come say hello. And it's good to see you.
Thank you. It's good to be back. Jim, you're really popular. I never got crowds like this. Congratulations. You're doing something right or maybe something wrong, but I doubt that.
I gave him all five dollars.
Oh, okay. It works. Thanks.
Larry's company provides, pays for the signs. They provide money for us to give small token checks for the winners and they pay for the goodies that you ate outside. So I just wanted to make sure I recognized him and thanked him for that. So. So our first presentation, and John Alita is going to help us out with this, is special recognition to Chris Wetstein and his team, San Bruno firefighters, Sears Corporation, PG&E volunteers, and Rebuilding Together Peninsula. So, as you can read, Rebuilding Together Peninsula is a nonprofit organization with the goals of rebuilding the homes and lives of the nation's most vulnerable homeowners and families at no cost to those served. Rebuilding Together also tackles buildings that serve the community in some significant way but have no or limited means to repair and maintain. Their work extends beyond the four walls of the home to impact the health and vibrancy of entire communities. One of this year's projects was to refurbish the American Legion Hall at 757 San Mateo Avenue. Two months, two months. Preparation work was necessary prior to the build day due to the extensive list of needed repairs. The final phase of work began on April 27th when members of the San Bruno Fire Department teamed up with PG&E volunteers, and I understand there was over 30 of them, to complete the upgrades and remodels. And I'd like you to welcome Chris Wetstein. Where'd he go? Oh, there he is. He was the team leader. He got the rest of the firefighters involved and enthused. And this is the power presentation that he put together. Well, I edited it a little bit. But he put it together that included the pre-work, the day of the work, and the after photos. So I'd like him to come and narrate that.
Thank you for having us. And on behalf of San Bruno firefighters, we'd like to thank everyone for showing up tonight, city council members, mayor, vice mayor. On April 27th of this year, we worked on a project at Rebuilding Together, sponsored by Rebuilding Together and Sears and PG&E as well. It took a few months to get all the work done, but it was successfully completed through all the hard work and through all the volunteers who showed up that day. So we'd like to thank all of you. Some of the tasks completed. So there's a lot of work that needed to get done. We started on the inside. We had to do new sheet rock on the interior walls plus paint. We did a bunch of electrical upgrades to make sure it was safe to the fire code. We did some roof repair because of the back of the building. It had some sinking in the foundation which still needs to be addressed due to a financial, they're trying to come up with the money to fix that. So that's still going on. But we did some kitchen and bathrooms. New dishwasher donated and installed by Sears. Interior entryway was remodeled and sheet rocked. Exterior of the building was painted thanks to our PG&E volunteers. They showed up in force. There's about 30-plus PG&E volunteers who showed up on the build day strictly just to be the paint team and paint the exterior of the building. Reconstruction of the exterior ramp. New redwood handrails built along the exterior of the ramp. Thanks to my dad, Jim Wetstein, who was here tonight as well. New flagpole was donated and installed. Exterior shed and handrails were painted to the rear of the building. Kitchen cabinet doors were in much-needed restoration, so we took those off, refinished them, and painted them. We had some new landscaping done to the front of the building with some new grass and plants and some hardwood floors were refinished in the interior. So before the build day, like we said earlier, it took a couple months, but this is what it looked like. I'm sure some of you recognize it doesn't look like that anymore. As you notice, the old yellow paint, the old flagpole which was ready to fall down, and a bunch of other remodels, new grass in the front. If you notice, if you look at the front entryway, there are some metal rails. Those were all redone too with new redwood rails. Go to the next picture. And there's just another, that's all right, there's a flagpole. Picture to the left is a shed that we ended up painting and cleaning up and then the picture to the right is just the front of the entrance, what it used to look like. It doesn't look like that anymore. Just a picture of the rear of the building. Those rails were all painted plus the exterior as well. And then this is the part of where the foundation in the rear of the building is actually sinking into the ground. Right now, they're looking for the funds to go ahead and fix that part. So we also had some roof leaks because of that, so we temporarily were able to put a Band-Aid on it and fix it. Interior of the structure. This is the old wood, lath and plaster construction. So we basically ripped all that out and put brand-new sheet rock all the way around on all four walls. Another picture of the lath and plaster construction. This is the picture of the kitchen. We had some of the plastic coming off some of the cabinet doors, so we peeled all of it off and sanded it, painted it, and called it good. There's a picture of the entryway. It doesn't look like that anymore. It's all brand-new sheet rock. It's all painted white. And there's also a little bit of, they had a little bit of a mold issue in one of the entrance doors to the back of the building, so that was cleaned up as well. There's a picture of a couple of our veterans. So here's one of the prep days and workdays. You can go ahead and skip that one. So this was the actual build day where we had Sears and PG&E. Sears showed up also on a separate day as well, but this is the day when PG&E came and this was just our morning briefing just before we started the project. So this right here was when we reconstructed the rampway. They had a handicap ramp, but it wasn't usable. It was out of service and dangerous. So we had a company come in and they went ahead and demolitioned all of it. And then we went to proceed to go ahead and, you see all the forms built here. My dad was a huge help on this project. He actually ran across the street where Caltrans was doing a bunch of work on the train, the train station and all the reconstruction that they're doing over there. So he was able to talk to one of the Caltrans workers and they donated all that rebar that you see right there and helped us with the forms as well. So there's some of the workers. I have to bring out my piece of paper. I apologize because there's a lot of people to thank for this project, but these gentlemen in particular from Albany's Construction, Phil and Joseph Albany, they went ahead and they didn't charge anything for the labor. They did the entire rampway for free. There's the pole that was donated and installed. And there's the finishing touch of the ramp. And then also the front stairway as well was cleaned up. There's just a picture of us. So this was the build day right here when PG&E went ahead and they broke ground and did a really good job painting the structure. It took all day with all 30 of them going all the way around the structure on ladders, on the rooftops, and painted the whole structure for us while we had volunteers on the inside doing all the inside work. Oh, I apologize. So that is my fiancee, Katie Flyer. To the right. She helped out quite a bit on this project. What's that?
It was her birthday.
It was her birthday, actually, yes. So one of the gentlemen I'd like to thank who's also here tonight, Dave Stagnaro, was a huge helper in this whole project. He's done sheet rocking for many years. He's actually standing back there. He's trying to hide. But his nickname's Rocco, but he did all the sheet rock in the entire building all by himself. He's very stubborn and you wouldn't let anyone help him, but he did all that work for us. There he is at work. And there's all the sheet rock. And there he is. And then another person we'd like to thank too, Holly Nelson, firefighter engineer, paramedic. She's also in the back as well. Holly served as our volunteer construction, volunteer captain. She helped us round up the troops from College of San Mateo Fire Students and helped me coordinate with all the logistics that needed to get done. There's some CSM Fire Students just doing some work on the front entryway. And there's Captain Mike Kennedy, who was also an asset to the project as well. Firefighter Joe Perna. And we had a lot of firefighters off duty for two months prior to this project, spending many hours working on this. They get off duty, they go there and do three, four, or five hours at a time, come in every other day helping out. It was a long, extensive project, but I emphasize that it was a lot of help from the Fire Department who was able to make this successful. This was also some cabinets I said in the kitchen were getting painted and redone. Some of the interior work. We also have firefighters Brandon Kohler, Ben Minkin, and firefighter Priolo as well. And then this is some of the exterior work. We had to go ahead and prep it for new topsoil and new grass, so we had to also level it out. That was a project that took a couple days as well. And then here's us at the end of the project kind of cleaning up all of our mess over the two months of basically renovating and taking over the whole American Legion Hall. And we all want to thank the American Legion veterans who were outstanding, letting us come there at odd hours of the day and night to let us do all of our work. And they also shut down operation when they could have been renting out the hall, but they let us do all of our work and they shut it down for us. So after the work was done, just some final pictures. Sorry I'm dragging along here, but there it is. So what you're looking at now is all the new sheet rock, new paint. The hardwood floor was also refinished as well. There's just another angle of it. New handrails. These are the bathrooms, which Irene O'Connell was nice enough to help out with.
She did paint that one.
So she did a fabulous job. There's our kitchen with the new cabinet doors cleaned up, painted. Then there's the front of the door, front of the American Legion Hall looks very different from the first picture we showed. My dad was actually the one who picked out the red, white, and blue and convinced the veterans to go ahead and choose those colors. It was pretty easy to do and well-appropriate as well. There's the new flagpole, the new ramp, basically one side of the building. What you don't see in that picture and this picture as well is the new redwood handrails. We didn't do that until the Sears came back about three weeks later. So if you want to see it, you can drive by. It looks great. And then there's the handrails, like I said, we painted, rear of the structure. And then at the end of it, the veterans were pretty excited when they first saw it, so they decided to go ahead and this was the first day that they raised their new flag with their new flagpole at the end of the project. And there's the before and after picture on the last slide right there. And just so I don't forget, there's some other names I'd like to recognize as well. Shawna O'Shaughnessy is also here from Rebuilding Together Peninsula who was a huge help. Roger Hops, Adam Whitmer, Randy Knight, Carrie Chang. Patty Larson from PG&E was a huge help in getting all the volunteers from PG&E to come out and help me coordinate it. Patrick Rodriguez, who's also here today from Sears. And also the American Legion vets. And a thank you to all of them for all their support and their service to this country.
Cities always like to give out proclamations and recognition and we have some proclamations to give out to various people that Chris mentioned. So when I call your group, would you please come and get this? So this is for, or send a representative. This is for the American Legion Post 409 and this is for your efforts in restoring and beautifying the American Legion. And by making these efforts, you have enhanced the quality of life for our residents, workers, and visitors. And... I gave him the wrong one. I'm sorry. We have to, we have to wait a minute. I'll make a special trip. This one is to Rebuilding Together. So we'd like you to come and if you'd like to say something about your organization.
Good evening, everyone. So Chris did a wonderful job explaining the project, but what it really shows is what Rebuilding Together does is allow people to come together. It provides the place for community to come together and give back. And this truly was a heartwarming, amazing project. We were able to bring together the public sector, the firefighters, the public, the private sector, PG&E and Sears, and then the nonprofit sector, Rebuilding Together. And then we were able to work with a wonderful group of vets and honor the work that they have, the service that they gave to our community. I am going to do one little plug. We are accepting applications right now, so for both homeowners and other nonprofits. So apply and you probably won't get this, but definitely apply. So thank you so much for the opportunity to be a part of your community and just help make things happen.
How can people apply? Can you go online?
Yes, you can go online. rebuildingtogetherpeninsula.org. rebuildingtogetherpeninsula.org. So, thanks.
Next we have for the San Bruno Firefighters Association. So I understand the president is here?
We have President Sean Ruby who's up here today.
Sean, would you come up, please?
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Wasn't expecting to do this tonight, so thank you.
I've been told I shouldn't surprise people by asking them to speak, but what the heck. This is for PG&E. And I just understand we have a representative from PG&E. Okay. Scott, would you like to say something?
Thank you very much, Council, City of San Bruno. I'd like to thank our partner, Rebuilding Together Peninsula, and Shawna. And on behalf of the more than 30 volunteers and 20,000 PG&Es, we'd like to thank you and we'd love to continue to be a good partner with the City of San Bruno. Thank you.
The next one is for Sears. And I believe we have a representative, Patrick? I was there just one of the days, painting the bathroom, and the people there, everybody, the firefighters, the Sears people, the PG&E people, did an amazing job and we really just want to thank you.
Well, don't have much to say, but I mean, it was a very heartfelt, you know, project that we have. And, you know, I know that everybody that came, we left a lot better after doing that kind of project. So we'll be doing more and we appreciate, you know, our veterans and everything they do for us. Thank you.
Next one, Chris, if you'd like to present this?
So this next award goes to someone who was right beside me the whole time, was actually the mastermind of the whole operation, but I just took all the credit for it. My dad, Jim Wetstein, who was an asset to the project and donated many hours of service helping out this project, running logistics, running to Home Depot, all the Home Depot runs, and basically doing all the stuff that I couldn't do. So I want to thank you, Dad, for all the work.
Thank you very much for this. It was an absolute honor and pleasure to be involved with Rebuilding Together again this year. And it was really neat building a new friendship with the guys down at the American Legion Hall. And thank you for all you've done and this was well worth the project to give back.
I mentioned him earlier, our sheet rock guy, AKA Rocco, Dave Stagnaro, who spent a lot of hours on this project as well and was a valuable resource and got us out of a lot of trouble. So I'm going to go ahead and invite him up here as well.
Yes, this was a great thing for me to do. You know, homeboy, San Bruno boy. And I worked a lot of years in the drywall trade and I was fortunate enough to get out and still have my wits about me a little bit. And so when Chris asked me to help out, it was very good. It was a good thing for me and met a lot of good American Legion boys over there. So we've had a lot of fun and I'd be looking forward to be helping out with the next one. So, thanks a lot.
I have one more and it's my privilege to present this one. And this is for Chris Wetstein. And it always, everyone here, everyone you've seen, everyone you've talked to, everyone you saw on the slide, did a fabulous job. We need everyone, but it always takes a leader, someone to start the process, someone to encourage everyone, someone to make it all happen, and that's Chris. So we'd like to thank you and...
This means a lot to me and to the firefighters as well. It's a wonderful project and we look forward to doing the next one next year. Thank you.
We're not quite over, but if the firefighters need to leave, I know that some of them are on duty, so if anyone needs to leave. We have our second half of this, which is the residential part, residential, commercial, and another special recognition that we will be giving out too. So some people have to leave. Pardon me? Oh, did you want to say something? I'm so sorry. Please come.
When I first heard about Rebuilding Together, I didn't have a clue what to expect. And as you can imagine, we went from a raw egg to an Easter egg. And our membership has increased. The word has gotten around. Our members are getting more active. And I just can't say enough good things about this thing. It's really been beneficial. Step two is coming up real quick, so keep your fingers crossed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We do value you and we're so happy that Rebuilding Together could do what they did for you. Our next part is going to start. Melody Tobin is going to do the, pardon me? Going to moderate because I trip over my tongue sometimes and we'll get started.
Okay. Good evening. I'm going to start the residential awards and we thank everybody for joining us. We are going to start with the single-family residence. And this is on Curb Appeal. So let me explain, the Beautification Award program is designed to recognize the efforts of residents, businesses, and public entities to improve the physical appearance of our community. The focus is on exteriors that require a significant commitment on the part of the property owner or renter. Commercial, 496 San Mateo Avenue. So this is the winner of our commercial. And it is Party for Less. And are they here this evening? Thank you. Party for Less? And did you want to say something? We have a...
I just want to say thank you very much for this and thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Party for Less is at 496 San Mateo Avenue and we appreciate you bringing some beautification to the avenue. We appreciate all your good business. Thank you. And secondly, apartment building. We'd like to recognize Park Plaza at 2081 Whitman Way. And I know you're here this evening. Have a certificate for you? Or would you like to?
No, no.
I would like to say something. This was nominated by a resident who noticed how much, and John is going to do the next couple of slides, how much improvement there was in the landscaping. New trees were planted, the place, the whole place was painted. And he just wanted to make sure that the Park Plaza people knew that the neighborhood notices when you make improvements like that, and so do we. So thank you.
Okay, on to single-family residence. And this is for Curb Appeal. And 794 Linden Avenue. This is recognition? This is recognition. Okay, so we're on recognition. These are the addresses that were nominated by fellow residents. 940 Hinsley Avenue. 945 Green Avenue. 470 Euclid Avenue. 657 Easton Avenue. 509 Third Avenue. And 178 Georgia Avenue, one-third prize. 528 Third Avenue is our second-place winner. And our first-place winner is 698 Easton Avenue. Is, I'm sorry, going back, our 528 Third Avenue, are you here with us this evening? Guillermo Quant? No? We have a certificate and a check for them and we'll go ahead and mail that. We have a certificate and a check for them, and we'll go ahead and mail that. And our first place in single-family residence curb appeal is 178... What? No. You're saying no to me? That was second place.
We're sorry, we're having a little technical glitch here.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, third place, single-family residence, is 178 Georgia Avenue. Are you with us this evening? Thank you. You're very happy to be here.
Yeah, I was just going to say, thank you very much for this, and I'd like to keep my house beautiful again. I mean, I've been here for eleven years, so I'd like to keep it nice, or that way I can, my neighbors look at them and see they can do the same thing. Thank you so much.
We agree. Keeping your house beautiful encourages your neighbors to keep up their residence. Okay. So, second, we did second. So, first place, 698 Easton Avenue. And that is Alberto and Maria Paredes. Are you with us this evening? 698 Easton Avenue. They have one first place in this category. We'll be mailing them a check, a frame certificate, and a sign for their yard, so they can display for all their neighbors to see and help encourage their neighbors to keep up their curb appeal as well. So, we're going to move on to improved residential property, and for this category, we have before and after pictures.
This came to me, a picture like this, with a little note that said, "This is the before of 575 Cedar Avenue." And I'm looking at it going, it's a car and a man, so I don't know where the cedar is. But if you look on the back left, which John is going to point out with a cursor, that's the before of Cedar, and then now you'll see the after of Cedar.
So, 575 Cedar Avenue, and unfortunately, they couldn't be here due to a family emergency, but we have one of the neighbors here this evening to accept on their behalf.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud. Well, I'd like to say thank you very much, and they've lived there for thirty-six years, and they've been very good neighbors, and I know they're going to keep this, and this is going to be something of value. Thank you.
And thank you for coming this evening to accept on their behalf. And then, first place and most improved is 1620 Hickory Avenue. Alan Lu? Alan Lu? And you're... Great, thank you. Did you want to say something?
Thank you very much for the inviting, and thank you for the inviting. Thank you very much.
And Alan, did you have anything you wanted to say about your residence? We have, do we, Miriam, do we have the microphone? Tell us, yes, tell us about your improvements and what you did and how you managed to make your home so beautiful.
Really surprised. I can't believe that I'm being invited here tonight. And, well, it's just like out of my mind that I never believed that I will get an award for remodel of my home. However, this is a prize really valuable of my life. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Alan. We're proud as well to have you as a member of our community and to have you care so much about how your house looks in your neighborhood. So, we really appreciate your involvement and what you've done. Thank you. Okay, so, we're going to move on to zeroscaping. Zeroscaping is low-water use and/or drought-tolerant landscaping, and we have several nominations. And again, the nominations are made by your fellow citizens of San Bruno and by some of the members of the Beautification Task Force. So, let me read the, let me read the description. Thanks. Zeroscaping encompasses a wide variety of landscaping choices, from attractive use of rocks and gravel, paving stones and statues, to the use of cactus, succulents, and other low-water-use plants, or a combination of it all. If you're interested, visit the city's website and learn about Lawn Begone. Lawn Begone is a program that provides rebates to approved customers that convert their water-thirsty lawns to water-efficient landscapes. So, the nominations in zeroscaping, 624 Easton Avenue. 161 Balboa Way. 820 Angus Avenue. And our third-place winner is 180 Cheryl Drive. And Yacito Batista, are you here? Yes? Thank you.
I have to work hard again. Maybe Caroline, you know, tried to nominate me, and she's probably tired of looking at me every day, every single day, for an hour, to fix my front yard. This is a good appreciation for my work. Thank you.
And our second-place winner is 131 Ross Way. Cheryl Corpus. And Jupur. Let's have a certificate and a check for you. Would you like to say something?
In behalf of my family, I would like to thank the City of San Bruno Council for giving us this award. It's really our pleasure, and we thank you so much for this. Yeah, thank you.
And our first-place winner is 3140 Fasman Drive. So, you have a story, and I won't even try and pronounce your name, but I'll let you pronounce it.
Okay.
And this is a lifetime resident of San Bruno.
Oh, yeah. Born and raised. This is the only, only city that I know, and I'd like to thank everybody for the award and everything. And I'd definitely like to thank my parents, who helped me make all the decisions on things that I never thought I ever would. I never knew what Sonoma Williams was. I thought that's where they sold paint, but that's Sherman Williams. I don't know anything about molding or anything like that, but my parents helped me with everything, and I'd like to thank them, and obviously, all you guys for nominating.
So, again, the first-place winners receive a sign to proudly display on your lawn that was donated by Prudential Realty, a frame certificate, and then a check, which is also donated by Prudential Realty. We appreciate Larry Franzell and his group for being such a good partner with us and helped the city to recognize our citizens who've done such great work in their community, their lawns, their front yards. So, we're going to move on. I know, did you want to do Skyline? So, before we wrap up, we have a special recognition to Skyline College. Skyline College Public Art Program. I'll let you do this.
Sorry. We didn't have time to coordinate this. Usually, we do a smoother job. I went up to Skyline College and walked around. I was, happened to run into the vice president, actually, and he escorted me to several places. And the next eleven slides show you a variety of new public art that is in, at the college. And if you stroll around the grounds, you'll see what's here. It's fabulous. This is a huge mural. It's maybe fifteen feet by, I don't know, twelve feet. It's all done on tile. This, oh, could you stop a second, John? I want, take a close look at this, and then, John, would you do the next slide? And that's where it is. It, I first saw it, and I'm looking, and I go, that has to be 3D, right? I mean, it has to be real. No, it's flat. It's a flat painting on the wall. I was amazed. John, could you go back again? So, doesn't that look real? Anyway, so, that was that. Then, there's, this was in, in between, a set of their buildings, this little yard, and they have the sculptures and the landscaping, which is lovely. A mural, this one's an older one, but I thought I should include it because it's gorgeous. And there's a couple other murals. Very vibrant, even after several years that they've been up. And I included this one because not only do they have the public art that we, things that we recognize as artwork, but their landscaping, their tile work, the cement work, it all has a balance, it all is artistically done. So, I wanted to make sure we put that there. I know we have a representative, I believe we have the president, do we not, of Skyline College, and I'd like to present her with this. We don't have a check, but I got my property tax bill today, so you'll be getting something, yeah. But we would like to recognize Skyline College and their efforts with public art. So, if you'd like to say something? Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Yes, we get your checks every day, so thank you. First of all, I would just like to say to the Honorable Mayor Jim Rohn and the members of the City Council and members on the dais here and guests, colleagues, on behalf of the San Mateo County Community College Board of Trustees and Chancellor Ron Galatolo, the esteemed faculty and staff and students at Skyline College, I really want to thank you for taking notice and providing this award to Skyline College. I feel like I'm kind of at a Skyline College meeting, quite frankly, because I see a lot of friends and loved ones in the audience here, members of the president's council that help keep us connected to the committee, to the community. But I do want to also acknowledge that we actually have, you saw some pictures there of the art, and there are some people on campus that are responsible for having the forethought and the foresight to really make sure that as we're doing the modernization of the campus, that we include the aesthetics as well, and we include the arts, because it is the kind of space and place that the community deserves to have access to. So, I want to acknowledge some people that are here in the audience here with me. First of all, the leadership of Vice Chancellor Jose Nunez as the Vice Chancellor of Facilities Operations Maintenance and Operations is, has just been phenomenal, and representing him is the Director of Maintenance Karen Powell here. And that's because we have that, we have that district support. And then, on the campus, the person responsible for the administration of the facilities is the Vice President Eloisa Periones, who is here in the front. And then, there's the people who do the real work with regard to the art, and that's the art faculty and staff, and they're led by the Dean of Social Science and Creative Arts, And Donna leads an Art on Campus Committee as well. But I also want to point out the esteemed faculty that we have here from the Art Department. We have Ellen Lorenstein, who's here, Bridget Fisher, who runs the art gallery, Paul Bradenbauer, who is one of the, who is the artist of two of those murals that you saw on those pictures, and Amir Estvahani, who is a new faculty member. So, on behalf of all of us, I want to thank you for the opportunity to receive this award.
Well, thank you for attending. That concludes our presentation for today, and I believe the mayor's going to call for a break.
First of all, thank you, Irene, for initiating this Beautification Task Force many years ago, and all of your committee and all the recipients. It's a, it's a great city, and it's fun to, it's fun to have fun once in a while. So, thank you very, very much. We're going to take a five-minute break and let you go. Look at your checks and enjoy your plaques.
And you can talk to Larry and say, maybe next year, they should be a little bigger. I said, next year, they should be a little bigger.